Hiring, developing, and retaining high-quality staff that reflects diversity and ensuring equitable practices. The Board has agreed on goals for the remainder of this school year, and at each meeting, we will remind ourselves of these goals and our progress. The first goal is to build Board unity. The Board's aim is to be high-functioning and collaborative. The second goal is to conduct a superintendent search and create a transition plan. We've conducted focus groups, held open forums, and surveyed the community. This evening, School Exec Connect will provide the profile of our new superintendent that was informed by the above-mentioned vehicles. We will focus on student achievement data. A Board of Education data workshop is scheduled for March 27th. We will review and improve community relations. To further this goal, we are forming a Community Engagement Committee. This will be an agenda item at the next Academic Excellence Strategic Planning and Communications Committee meeting in April. We will proactively plan and provide timely communications on the continuity of learning plan. Increased in-person learning began yesterday. We will ensure district resources are aligned to priorities and goals. We were voting on budget assumptions and parameters this evening to align budget priorities. A budget workshop is being scheduled from mid to late April. Board events since March 9th and upcoming events are included in our Board packet. Since our last meeting, the Board continues to respond to emails. Over the past few months, every email has received a response. We will continue this practice in this environment. When communications are made, it is typical for the Board President to serve as a spokesperson on behalf of the Board rather than receive individual responses from each Board member. Public comments will be shared after discussion items. This will be the opportunity to share general comments and those specifically related to the reconfirmation of instructional delivery plan. Public comment will now be treated as in the past when meeting in person. Anyone present in the WebEx event may express a live comment. Sign up is required, and the sign-up form is available on our website. If the public comment is intended to be critical of or express dissatisfaction with a particular staff member, student, or group, you are encouraged not to identify the person by name. You may request a private meeting with district representatives or utilize the complaint process found in our policy, which provides for resolution at the complainant's closest point of origin. Generally, Board members and the superintendent will not respond to public comments during the Board meeting. Issues may be referred to the superintendent for investigation study and/or a response. And that concludes announcements. We will now move to items from the Secretary. Mr. Walker?
The Board has received communications regarding the return to in-person learning, seclusion rooms, state of the district, superintendent search, Jewish studies, and early head start services. Communications are acknowledged, and when appropriate, a response is provided. A list of correspondence can be found in the Board packet, which is available on the FPS website.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Our next item is a report from the Student Roundtable President. Do we have our Student Roundtable President with us?
As this week, as this month is March's Reading Month, we've continued our opportunities of visiting classrooms virtually and reading to students across the district, K through 5 elementary schools. Additionally, as years comes to a close, we want to make sure that we are planning for next year and beyond. So, we have started connecting with middle schoolers. We're in the process of creating a video to send to the various middle schools, and we also invited students from Warner and STEAM to attend our meeting last week. We're working on making our social media more interactive and present to make sure that students are always aware that Senior Roundtable will exist and that we have a platform to advise a superintendent and provide student voice. A couple of meetings ago, we had our, well, one of our students brought up the idea of offering seniors a graduation cord, and we're still in the process of creating our proposal. My goal is that the class of 2022, so next year's class, will receive these honors at the earliest to showcase their leadership, time commitment, and service to our community that we do in Student Roundtable. And hopefully, these cords will continue as a symbol of what our group does and what we represent. Also, we had some spirit wares. We had these really amazing masks that we gave to all of our members, and from what I've heard, they're really adorable, functional, and practical. Lastly, I want to say thank you to all the adults in the room who heard what I said, what I said that students wanted to be more involved in the decision-making process. Some of the most unique opportunities have now been opened up for students, including myself, to be part of committees like the Community for Community Relations or creating a culture for equity and innovation. I think so many students love this opportunity to not only meet staff members, but also engage with members of our community to understand and learn all the intricate aspects that go into the decision-making process, decision-making process, excuse me. Additionally, members of Senior Roundtable also participated in a focus group that was for the superintendent search, which was another way that us students could really express how we were feeling and how, what we wanted to see in the new leadership in the coming years. And as many of us were upperclassmen, we'll want to ensure that we have the best for the incoming generation of students that will come through this district. And I cannot wait to see what this partnerships, partnership bring, and I know that this will bring a brighter and better future for many of the students across the district to come. Once again, thank you for welcoming me and Senior Roundtable into the space, and I truly enjoy my updates to the Board. Thank you all for listening, and let me know if you have any questions, and have a wonderful spring break.
Thank you so much, Akila. We really, really appreciate that. Are there any comments or questions from Board members? Thank you so much, Akila, again, for being engaged and also for...
Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Smith has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith.
It is so hard to do these meetings here, and we all can't see each other. So, I don't know why I feel like a teller at the bank with all these dividers. Akila, thank you so much for all that you have done throughout this year. This has been a difficult year for you as a student, as well as it has been for our staff and other students, as well as our Board. You've done a phenomenal job. You've brought some great ideas to us, as well as us even looking into in the future, having a student voice on this Board. Whether I'm here or my colleagues, it would be important for us to have someone like you to be able to speak and have those ideas come to the forefront. Because, you know, I'm seasoned, and as a seasoned, not only Board member, but as a seasoned adult, we need to hear from our youth. So, again, thank you, and you too have a safe break. Stay out of Miami, but have a good time and stay safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I am so glad that you and the rest of your colleagues were able to attend the forums for the superintendent and are also getting engaged in community events. Thank you for that very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the legislative update. Mr. Ridge?
I will be passing this along to our new representative for the Oakland Schools Government Committee, Dr. Blau.
Thank you, Dr. Blau.
Yes, there are two main issues to report. One is the passage of the American Rescue Plan, and we are yet to find out. We look forward to finding out how that might impact our district in terms of funding and support that might be available to us. And also, there have been some new guidelines put forward by the MDE regarding testing for athletics.
Thank you, Dr. Blau. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to district updates. Dr. Goodwin?
Good evening, everyone. Still March, so still Happy Reading Month and Happy National Women's History Month. Hopefully, you all have gotten the opportunity to stay abreast of my riveting superintendent spotlights. If you don't watch any of them, please make sure you watch the one from last week, where I was able to interview nine of our 15 National Merit finalists. Again, I really want to impress upon everyone how amazing it is for our district to have 15 National Merit finalists. So, Farmington Public Schools is definitely doing some things right, so we're very excited about that. But that has been my favorite spotlight. The students were just a joy and wonderful and just so representative of all of the talent that we have here and our students and all that our staff have poured into them. And speaking of our staff, yesterday, March 22nd, we, of course, was the first day that we added the additional time for in-person learning. So, I and a few of the other central office members had an opportunity to visit many of the schools. I think every school was visited. I got to, I think, about 10 of them, and I just want to tell you about some of my experiences. Let me see, I got to stand with Mr. O'Brien at Wood Creek as they did arrival, and just the number of parents and the number of students was just amazing and how well that went off very smoothly. Went over to Forest, where a full 77% of their students are in person. So, that building was filled almost to capacity, to regular capacity. Went to Farmington Central, went to, let me see, goodness gracious. Went to Beachview and watched as they did their dismissal procedures. Again, just trying to keep students as socially distanced as possible, make sure the parents didn't have a long line to wait in. Last week, I got a call from a journalist who was asking me, how confident was I that we were going to be able to pivot to this new normal without a hitch? And I said, "Well, I'm not going to promise that there aren't going to be any glitches," because, of course, we did, this was a huge undertaking. This was a major pivot for us. So, I'm sure that there are some hiccups, and there are going to be some things that we may change or find out ways to do better. But I definitely was 100% and am 100% confident that we have the ability to do this successfully. And what I saw yesterday is that our staff, every single member of our staff really dug in, got their hands dirty, and did the work necessary for us to be able to bring more of our students back for in-person learning for more of the time. And it was just very, I had some tears in my eyes as I saw so many students in the classroom. My goodness, I went to STEAM at probably the worst possible time because it was the time that the K-5 students were being dismissed as the 6-8 students were coming from lunch. So, that was quite overwhelming, but to see so many students all at once, it did have some degree of normalcy. Things aren't normal yet, though, and we know that and we understand that. But goodness gracious, so much hard work went into getting us to where we are today. And so, I just want to acknowledge all of our hard-working staff, every single parent that is trusting us with their children, you know, every single member of our community who have supported us through this very difficult time. We are doing a great job, Farmington Public Schools. Good job, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Goodwin. I applaud you and the district. I do believe that the district is doing a great job. Over the past year, all of our staff, all of our staff at Farmington Public Schools have been making tremendous sacrifices to keep our school district functioning in the face of COVID and the pandemic. And I've been hearing it from a number of Board members since the beginning of the year and even before that, of all of the appreciation and thanks. From para-pros and to bus drivers, teachers, secretaries, principals, and central office staff, you have all sacrificed your time, and we asked you to do that, to make sacrifices, as the district was anticipating some huge losses in the face of many unknowns that were occurring as a result of school financing through this pandemic. Given that the school financing from the state and federal government have actually exceeded our expectations this year, I believe it would be appropriate to reward the district's employees for their sacrifices and for their constant pivoting and for their hard work during this difficult time. Accordingly, I would like for the Board to entertain a motion to discuss and recognize staff appreciation. I'd like the Board to consider that as a first order of business under action items. Is there a motion? Mr. Ridge, thank you.
Thank you, President Weems. I move that we amend the agenda to add staff appreciation as Item A under action items and then move all other action items down accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Is there a second?
Support.
I hear support from everyone. I think I first heard it from Mr. Walker. I hear a motion to amend the agenda to add staff appreciation as Item A under action items with all other items following immediately thereafter, supported by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much, Board. We will, we have amended the agenda. We will now move to reports from Board committees. The first one is Finance and Facilities Committee. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Weems and I met on March 17th with the Finance and Facilities Committee. The bus purchase was discussed, and that is going to be a discussion item and an action item tonight. And the reason for both being on the agenda is to get that done before a price increase. The MSBO is the Michigan School Business Officials Bus Purchase Program. Gives the district pricing leverage. And it will be explained that we're going to be replacing the 2013 buses and that our bus fleet size remains constant. And we also learned at the meeting that buses have a 10-year life. They spend eight years on the road and two years as spare buses. And at the end of the life, they actually strip down the buses for spare parts and then sell the rest for scrap. So, that was just little additional items from the committee meeting. We talked about there's auditor recommendation is going to be a discussion item, and the district compares auditing costs with other school districts. The budget parameters and assumptions was a discussion item at the last Board meeting, and that's going to be an action item today. The second budget amendment along with proposed 2021-22 budget will be presented in June. Oakland Schools IGA, the district has an intergovernmental agreement with Oakland Schools for the finance bookkeeper position in the business office, and the district is pleased with the employee, and they're going to renew the contract with this position. Our IT Department Services are also contracted with Oakland Schools. And the last thing we talked about was a budget item. The committee asked for a budget workshop, and since the meeting, we have that scheduled for April 10th. And so, we'll be looking, the whole Board will be looking at the budget in a workshop situation. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinrich. Seeing no questions, we will move on to the Academic Excellence Strategic Committee. Dr. Blau?
Yes, we spoke about the increasing in-person learning plan that had, had been developed for implementation yesterday, and I'm so pleased to hear how smoothly things have gone. Much kudos is due our teachers and administrators, central office custodians, bus drivers, everyone in our district who really moved heaven and earth in not much more than a week and a half to make this happen. And it is only because of the dedication of our Farmington Public School staff that we were able to, to pull this off in such a short amount of time. And so, congratulations to everyone for your tremendous accomplishment in making this happen on behalf of our students. So, we thank you. We also spoke about the accreditation process. We are in the final phase of our district accreditation process. The accreditation team from Cognia will be coming May 3rd through 6th in a virtual way, virtual capacity, to do our, our final evaluation in this particular FPS accreditation series. We also discussed the land school air implementation. It was paused in early March, and some additional training opportunities have become available for staff, students, and community members. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Blau. Seeing no questions, we will move on to discussion items. We will first discuss our new superintendent profile. Mrs. Buckley, do we have School Exec Connect on the line? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Matthews. I'm with School Exec Connect, and I'm helping with the superintendent search. Kevin O'Meara is also here this evening. And we have a, a presentation for this evening, and I'm hopeful that I'll be able to share my screen. Is that possible, Ms. Buckley? Okay, thank you. And let me share my screen here, and we will share our superintendent profile with you. We present this superintendent profile this evening as a, as a way to share the insights that we gathered as we talked with a variety of focus groups in the district. We will provide both this PowerPoint and then also a written summary for the Board, and I will email those to Ms. Buckley tomorrow so that she can share those with the Board tomorrow. The Board, as we talked with the Board about the work that we would do for the district, we had, we identified kind of three steps to developing the superintendent profile. The first step was really to conduct focus groups with a wide variety of stakeholders. The second step was to conduct an online survey to gather input from school staff, parents, students, and community members. And then the third was to come back to the Board with a superintendent profile based on the information that we gathered from these sources. The profile report can be used in a variety of ways. The most important and pressing need will be, we will use it to screen candidates for the superintendent position. The Board and the, and Dr. O'Meara and I will use the new superintendent profile to screen and conduct interviews with the candidates that, that we recruit for this position. You can also use this report to develop interview questions for the candidates, and we will, as we come back to the Board after the application period is closed, to present to the Board some recommendations on who to interview. We will conduct a, an interviewing workshop with the Board, but this profile can certainly be used to develop questions for the candidates. It can also be used for the, with the Board to use this profile report to find out about what the district constituents were thinking. We interviewed a wide variety of people, both online and in person, and so, this will give the Board some stakeholder perspective. And finally, this profile can be used to help gain some knowledge of the district. Candidates can use it to gain knowledge of the district, but also, the Board could use it to identify some of the strengths and challenges here in the district. So, we conducted focus groups. There were 111 people that we spoke with through the course of our focus group conversations. And we also had an online survey that was available that, that received 549 responses, and it was open, the online questionnaire was open March 1st through March 19th. And, and as a disclaimer there, the resulting report is not a scientific study and provides only the perceptions of those who responded or participated. And in the survey report, percentages are rounded, so they may not equal 100% all the time. So, the, the process was that we had four guiding questions that we asked each group, both in-person and online. And those guiding questions were, what are your district's greatest strengths and attributes? The underlying question there was, why would a new superintendent want to come to the Farmington Public Schools? The second question is, what are your district's greatest challenges? What should a new superintendent know before he or she accepts this responsibility? The third question is, what should the priorities be for the new superintendent? And the fourth question was, what are the most important personal qualities, skills, and experiences that are important for the new superintendent to possess to be successful in the Farmington Public Schools? So, I will review the focus groups with you. Dr. O'Meara will review the online survey, and then I will detail what we believe is the, the profile that we will use as we search for a new superintendent. So, in our focus group participants, we had 11 meetings with various stakeholders, and that totaled, as I mentioned earlier, 111 participants. There were parents and students, certified and support personnel of the district. The Board of Education was a focus group. We also talked to a variety of community leaders, city government, but also parents, social media activists, community leaders of a wide variety. And we also talked to administration, both at the central office level and at the building level. So, the first question really focused on what are the district's strengths? And, and through our conversations, we found a wide variety of strengths in the district. One theme that came through over and over again was that diversity throughout the district was really a strength. Race, economic, cultures, all of the diversity within the district is seen as a strength. There is an engaged and innovative staff. There's a variety of programming in the district that supports multiple opportunities for students. We have strong teacher leaders. They are advocates for the students in the district. We have teachers who care deeply about the students in the district. There are strong unions in the district, which is seen as a strength. Community support was seen as a strength in the district. Strong family connection, strong parent networks. The, the community truly supports the district. There was support for career and technical education within the district, support for arts and athletics. There was also a strong sense that there was a willingness and an ability for the district to collaborate with community and community groups. The district has a strong financial position. The, the schools are seen as safe, and the use of technology was seen as one of the strengths of the district. But on the flip side of that coin, obviously, are the challenges that the district faces. And, and these were the challenges that we heard through a wide variety of sources as we talked to those 111 people and 11 groups. There is lack of a clearly articulated vision for the district, who the vision, who the district really wants to be. There are persistent achievement gaps throughout the district. There is, understanding of diversity and equity is seen as a challenge within the district. There is a history of race-related issues in the district that, that many people want the district to address as, as we move forward. There was a sense that there's a lack of focus in the district in the sense that there are too many initiatives. Because there are too many initiatives, it's hard for people to understand exactly what the priorities in the district are, and that goes back to that lack of a clearly articulated vision for the district. There is a concern about the declining enrollment in the district. There is a concern about the perception of, of the district. For example, former superintendents were run out of town is, is one perception. The Board is difficult was one perception. The district is not academically competitive was one, one perception. And, and that gets back to, can we, do we have a compelling articulated vision for the district of who we are and what we want to be? There is a concern about bargaining multiple contracts this spring. The relationship with unions sometimes becomes adversarial. There was a concern expressed about lack of diversity within the staff. Some highlighted, students in particular, kind of highlighted this idea. Some highlighted, students in particular, kind of highlighted this idea that there's a lack of student voice in the district, that students are not heard and/or listened to. And similarly, parents feeling unheard at times. It was mentioned in several different forums that the, the district is fractured, that there's no unifying force moving the district forward. There was a concern about a lack of communication from the board and the superintendent to the community, to the staff. And that, again, gets back to this clearly articulated vision for the district. And then the final challenge that we heard in a variety of places was that there were trust issues between groups in the district, between central office and administrators, between just the district and parents, between administrators and teachers and staff. We asked people what the priorities should be for the first year of the superintendent. The, the goal is to find a superintendent who will have a long tenure in the district, but coming into the district, what should be the priorities for that first year? And so we asked people, you know, what would they like the superintendent to focus on in the, in his or her first year in the district? Overwhelmingly, one of the, the first year priorities was building relationships. The superintendent needs to build relationships with the board, build relationships with the teachers, especially with union leadership, and ultimately build relationships with the community. Included in that building relationships is the idea that we will build trust, that we will find ways to help the community trust the district. One of the priorities identified was this issue of pay for teachers and staff. There was a consensus at, at times that the fund balance has risen and yet pay for teachers and staff has, has not been addressed. There was a priority of examining the budget and where the money is spent. Are we spending the, spending the district revenue in places where it will make a difference? There was concern about the administrative structure of the district. Are there too many administrators? Are they positioned well to serve the needs of the students in the district? Priority is to ensure that schools remain safe in, in the community. There was a sense that we need to develop a culture of collaboration during that first year, that the, the new superintendent really needs to rebuild that sense of collaboration among the groups in the district. There was a sense that the new superintendent needs to focus on developing a positive image of the district and begin an examination of the district curriculum to make sure that it is a curriculum that challenges students, that helps students achieve in appropriate ways. And then finally, again, there was a priority of listening to the students, to hear what the students have to say and to respond to those student needs. We, the fourth question really focused on, what are the desired skills and characteristics that you want in a new superintendent? And these were the ones that we heard over and over again. One, you want a superintendent who has strong experience, experience in, in leading a district, not necessarily as a superintendent, but in a, in a strong and visible role within a district. A, a strong experience coming into the job. Somebody who is a relationship builder, which would include being an exceptional listener and somebody who is approachable. There is a sense that one of the skills and characteristics that we need is somebody who knows the educational landscape, understands social emotional learning, understands the impact of trauma on student achievement, understands how to support all students. And the emphasis there is supporting all students within the district. The desired characteristic was that you wanted a leader who is visible, wanted a leader who, who is a decision maker, is able to make decisions and stand behind those decisions. One of the characteristics was skills in changing the narrative about the district. And, and so there was concern expressed about what the narrative is about the district. And so it was said in a variety of different ways that we needed somebody to come into the district who would help change that narrative and who has skills in changing that narrative about the district. A characteristic was somebody who was politically agile, somebody who was visionary, somebody who has high emotional intelligence. And that gets back to those concepts of relationship builder, exceptional listener, approachable. Somebody who is able to build a team, recognizing that the superintendent may be the leader of the district, but it takes a team to make the district move forward. Somebody who is inspirational, somebody that people could get behind, somebody that people are willing to follow. And finally, a, a strong communicator. And Dr. O'Meara will talk about the community online survey.
Thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate it. And thank you all for being here tonight. As Steve has mentioned, we had a large number, in my opinion, for this type of district and this size district of survey responses, 549 responses. That's a very, very good number. And you're going to hear lots of themes that Steve kind of defined in, in the focus group and open forum responses. So there's some, some common themes here that I think we should pay, pay some attention to. Just to break it down for you, about two-thirds of the people that responded to the survey were parents of either current or past students. Again, about a quarter of the responses from teachers and other certificated staff members. About 16% were other people in the community, community members and business leaders. We had about 9% of the support staff. And then about the same number of students, other administrators and people who define themselves as others. So that, that was kind of a, a good response rate, I think. Moving on, Steve?
Yep. There we go.
So the educational strengths, we asked for five responses and here are the top five. That as defined, and, and these are thematic, you're, you're hearing the same kinds of responses that you did in the focus groups, that students feel safe and the staff learning, the staff themselves will be very, very safe. It's a positive learning environment. Everyone that responded, about a third, a little bit more than a third, said that the use of technology for learning was, was strong. That's a, that's a strength in the district. Many of the respondents, again, about a third, said that the focus on development of student skills and communication, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, problem solving and technology was a strength of the district. Those are considered 21st century skills and, and should be a focus of the district. The fourth highest response was that of an engaged and supportive parents and community. And you know that, the parents and community are very, very engaged there. And then another strength that was defined is that the, there is a strong communication with parents and community about what's happening in the district. So those are some of the, the strengths that were defined in, in the survey. Next, please, Steve? I'm sorry, you're quicker than I am. The challenges there, the top five were that the, the, there seems to be a lack of some of these items here. A clearly articulated vision for the direction of the public schools, the Farmington Public Schools. You heard that from the focus groups, you heard that from the open forums, you heard it from the survey respondents. A challenge again was the environment that attracts and retains highly effective personnel. A challenge again was instructional methods that engage all students, not just the top students, but of, of all, all students from all different backgrounds. That there has been a, an attempt, but perhaps one that needs a little more attention, of closing the achievement gaps amongst student subgroups. And the last challenge that was identified in the survey respondents was a knowledgeable and innovative district and school leaders. I think that has a lot to do with perhaps the, the turnover in the superintendent's office. Thank you, Steve. These are the organization or managerial strengths in the district. The top three responses are school safety, again, the number one response. A clean and well-maintained schools and grounds. People are proud to send their kids to these buildings. They're clean and safe and, and well-regarded by the district. And again, the third response was up-to-date technology, especially learning technology. The challenges, the number one challenge by far was that the, the board governance appears to be still a perception by the respondents is something that's a challenge. The second one is the image and reputation of the district, which has taken a hit over the past few years. There's no denying that. That, that's something that's going to take some time to rebuild. And then the last one was a long-range strategic plan and implementation. I know that's an attention of the, of the board that's in place right now, but that's something that obviously is a perception of the survey respondents needs some attention. The priorities for the new superintendent, in, in terms of numerical order, are selecting and retaining excellent teachers and leaders. We need good people to work with our students. A continued improvement academic environment for achievement for all students of all backgrounds. And development of a culture of collaboration among all stakeholders, transparencies, communication, listen to ideas and, and make those decisions based on the collaboration. Characteristics and skills needed for the superintendent, again, these top, these were the top five. Makes decisions on what is best for students, the very best for students, if you want to use that "be" there. Articulates a clear vision for leading our district that inspires others, that, and then enables others. Practices transparency in his or her decision-making throughout the process. Develops a deep understanding of curriculum instruction and student learning. I would throw in a student assessment as, as a deep, as a need here. And the last one is to build effective teams and brings out the best in others. In other words, someone who's a, a team builder and a team leader that can make sure everyone reaches their potential. I'm going to turn it over to Steve to share the profile with you.
As we share the profile with you, the profile identifies wrapping in these top themes that we heard through the focus groups and the online survey. The profile really is a tool that we will use as, as people apply for the job. We will let them know these are the things that the Farmington Public Schools is looking for in their new superintendent. These will also be themes that we would encourage you, as, as we go through the interviewing process, to probe, to, to see how people have demonstrated these skills and attributes and, and abilities in their previous jobs, so that you, you identify a person that you will extend an offer to who has the, the characteristics that meet this profile. So the profile really talks about the new superintendent should be a person who, first, is a person with exceptional people skills, who can communicate well, listen and understand the needs of others. Second, a person who has experience in and has demonstrated an ability to address the benefits and challenges of, of a diverse school district and community, and has and can address issues of race and equity among students, staff and the community. Third is a person who is a vibrant, inspirational, strong and visible leader. Fourth is a leader who has demonstrated the ability to build a team that will create a vision that motivates and inspires the staff and community to support the Farmington Public Schools. Continuing with the profile, a leader who has demonstrated the ability to place the needs of students first and understands the importance of addressing the whole child, including academic and social and emotional needs. A leader who can engage and build a strong working relationship with the Board of Education that will move the district forward in a positive and productive manner. A leader who uses data to inform decision-making and is resolute, transparent and honest when making decisions. And finally, a leader who views the Farmington Public Schools as a long-term opportunity to make a significant difference in the lives of the students and the community. So we'll review those profile pieces just real quickly again. So a person with exceptional people skills, person who communicates well, listens, understands the needs of others. A person who has experience in and has demonstrated an ability to address the benefits and challenges of a diverse school district and community, and has and can address issues of race and equity among students, staff and the community. A vibrant, inspirational, strong and visible leader. A leader who has demonstrated the ability to build a team that will create a vision that motivates and inspires the staff and communities to support the Farmington Public Schools. A leader who has demonstrated the ability to place the needs of students first and understands the importance of addressing the whole child, including academic and social and emotional needs. A leader who can engage and build a strong working relationship with the Board of Education that will move the district forward in a positive and productive manner. A leader who uses data to inform decision-making and is resolute, transparent and honest when making decisions. A leader who views the Farmington Public Schools as a long-term opportunity to make a significant difference in the lives of, of the students and community. So as we move forward, we will use this profile to conduct interviews and reference checks from today, March 23rd through April 20th, when the application period ends. And we will use that new superintendent profile. As people apply, we will send out the profile to them to identify for them that these are the kinds of things that the Farmington Public Schools is looking for. After the application period closes, Dr. O'Meara and I will review all the applications. We will interview candidates that we believe have potential to be interviewed by the Board of Education. We will narrow down the list of candidates and come to the board with a, a slate of candidates on April 27th. The, the goal here is for us to identify who, those people that fit the profile and then bring that slate to the Board of Education. Many of the candidates are applying in confidence because they already have jobs and, and they don't want their names out there until the board has made decisions on who to interview. And so we will come to the board with a recommendate, recommend, recommended slate. And if the board is not satisfied with that slate, then we will continue to look. But we feel confident that we will be able to bring the board between five and seven candidates that, that would be strong candidates for the board to consider. And then you would conduct your first interviews, May 5th and 6th. And then second interviews and candidate presentations and perhaps interviews within the community with different groups, parent groups, administrative groups, teacher groups on May 11, 12 and 13. And then after that, the board would get together to make the final selection and we would con, conduct those final reference checks. And you could negotiate the contract and make your announcement of who the new superintendent would be. The goal would be to begin the duties on July 1st, 2021. I know the board is looking for some do's and don'ts as you go through this process. Dr. O'Meara and I will develop a, kind of a one-page guideline for the board. But this gives a, a broad overview of, of what we have identified through our focus group conversations and through the online survey of the profile that we believe will attract a, a great slate of candidates for the board. And, and this is kind of the timeline that you will go through in interviewing the, for the next superintendent. Are there questions that you have for either Dr. O'Meara or myself?
Mr. Rich.
Thank you. I just want to start and say thank you so much for all this work. I think, as we said when you interviewed the board, we would have a lot of community input on this and now you believe us. I think it's great because we do have a very involved community. And knowing what our strengths and, and challenges are as we view them is sometimes different than how the community views it. And so I think we have a lot of really good information to go off of for us to, to see what's next and see who you end up bringing to us in that first, in that first slate.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, you have a very involved community. And yes, they're not afraid to share their opinions. So thank you very much for that.
And to piggyback off, off of that, this echo, there we go. To piggyback off of that, when the candidates are brought forth and then are being interviewed by the community, how is that information going to be collected and given back to the board to get, to make sure that we hear the voices of our community as we go into our discussions with those candidates and making our selections at that point?
That's a great question. You know, ultimately, the board is charged, the board is charged with the responsibility of selecting the new superintendent. What we will do when we come into the community is, is to give you some guidelines as to how to, to gather feedback from those various groups. So, so we would recommend a, a couple of approaches. The board can identify which approach they would like to use. Typically, what will happen is it will have some feedback sheets. We won't ask the community or administration or teachers to, to rank the candidates, but we will ask them to identify strengths and weaknesses so that the board can hear from the community and from staff about how they see those candidates. Ultimately, we believe that we will then share that information with the board so that you have that before you make your final decision.
Thank you.
Dr. Blau.
I just had a clarification question. When you ran the focus groups, the certified and support personnel, does that mean the teachers and the other? teachers and the other FPS staff?
Yes, we had a variety of focus groups. We had with, with teachers, we had with support staff, and so it was, we lumped those together.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, I greatly appreciate the work that you guys did in the, in the discussions that I observed. It was pretty clear that you were listening. I anticipate that you did the same thing when you were meeting with our community. I trust that you listened and that they felt heard the same way that I felt heard and that our board members felt heard in the sessions that you had with us. Thank you for pulling this together. I'm quite pleased with the candidate profile, and I have nothing further to add. I'm seeing nods from my fellow board members, so I think we are all set. I look forward to hearing from you as to the progress, and we will see you again when it's time to start narrowing down the candidates.
Yes, we will. Thank you very much.
I just want to just share one little thing. We will send a full report to you tomorrow. We just want to make sure that you have that information. We're hopeful that you'll share that information to the extent that you think is important with your community on your website or social media or newsletters, or however you want to share that. But we think it's important for the community as a, as a whole to, to stay informed during this process so that they know their voices have been heard and accommodated. So, so we'll send it to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, we'll move on to review of auditor appointment.
Sorry, hitting too many buttons here. Good evening. This evening, Kim Pincheck, our finance director, is with us, and she is going to share our auditor recommendation and some other information with you this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. In law, we are required to have a financial statement audit every year, and so each spring we make a recommendation to the board for the appointment of an auditing firm to conduct the financial statement audit of all of our district funds. This year, we are recommending to retain Plant Moran for this service. This year's fee proposal is approximately 1% higher than last year on the basic financial statement audit. We are not able to obtain an exact fee quote for the single audit of federal funds at this time. That's due to the dynamic nature of the federal grant funding this spring, and it seems to be kind of ongoing with different stimulus packages as things are being released in, both at the state and the federal level. However, despite all of that, we feel that this year's fee proposal remains competitive for the services that are provided to us, and also competitive compared to the similar districts in Oakland County, both based on number of students and the scope of the work performed. So currently, Plant Moran audits the comprehensive annual financial report, the single audit of federal awards, the ASBO certification report, and they conduct annual testing and auditing of our capital project expenditures in both the 2018 and 2020 bond funds. In addition to the auditing services, Plant Moran continues to provide value-added services throughout the year to Farmington Public Schools. They provide communications and materials to help the business office navigate through new accounting pronouncements. They conduct an annual school law and finance seminar for both school superintendents and board members, and I believe most, if not all, of you have attended that in the past. And they have also provided guidance related to various federal COVID relief grant funds this year as well. For comparative purposes, we've provided you with a copy of a survey of Oakland County school districts and their respective audit firms and fees for last year fiscal year 2020. So I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Mr. Rich. I just want to say we have worked with Plant Moran for our audits, and I've been very impressed with the results we've had in the past and the amount of work they put into making sure that all of our board members are up to date on everything is, is definitely
I will also add that the board has in its packet information on comparatives across other school districts of similar size across and throughout Oakland County and beyond. We also did talk about it at our finance committee meeting, just an understanding of what the process is generally for auditor rotations. It is great that we have a reputable firm. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're, that independence is not compromised. And so we talked about that a bit, and we talked about the fact that there are mandatory partner rotations, which give us new staff, but at least with the firm, we still have some knowledge retained so that it is not as cumbersome for our staff to have to deal with a new auditor assignment, you know, every so many years. So just wanted to add that. This will come for action at our next meeting. Seeing no further questions, we'll move on to review of bus purchase.
Am I rolling here?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Aaron Hill, I'm the transportation supervisor here. I come to you tonight with the passage of the bond on March 10th, 2020. Administration is proposing the first bond bus purchase through the MSBO Bus Purchase Program. To date, the district has purchased 42 new buses with the 2015 bond funds to modernize the student transportation fleet. After analyzing the condition of the entire fleet and taking into consideration the age, the mileage, maintenance needs, physical condition, and the recent police inspection, administration is recommending the purchase of 10 new buses. The Transportation Department is recommending that the purchase include one mini tour ortho bus, which is a 30-passenger with air conditioning, two special education ortho buses with a five-chair wheelchair capacity with a wheelchair lift and air conditioning, three regular education buses, which would be 65-passenger, four regular education buses, 65-passenger, with undercarriage compartments. This would bring the total bus replacement to 52 buses with approximately 49% of the existing fleet, of, of the existing fleet that we're going to be replacing. So to purchase the 10 buses, administration will be utilizing the 2021 Michigan School Bus Business Officials MSBO Bus Purchase Program. Utilizing the program gives the district pricing leverage because of the number of buses that, that are purchased through this program annually. It also saves the district time because MSBO has already completed the bidding process with very specific parameters. The three vendors that participated in the bidding were Midwest Transit, who represents international buses, Hoekstra Transportation, who represents Thomas buses, and Holland Bus Company, which represents Bluebird buses. MSBO evaluates the program and pricing twice a year to make certain that the most competitive pricing is being obtained. The cost for the buses were as follows. For the mini tour bus, Hoekstra bid $59,499. Midwest Transit bid $61,836. Holland bid $59,252. For the two special education ortho buses, Hoekstra bid $117,948 for each bus, for a total of $235,896. Midwest Transit bid $118,914 for each bus, for a total of $237,828. Holland Bus bid $117,368 for each bus, for a total of $234,736. The 365-passenger buses, Hoekstra bid $98,558 for each bus, for a total of $295,674. Midwest Transit bid $97,987 for each bus, for a total of $293,961. And Holland bid $97,371 for each bus, for a total of $292,113. For the 465 passengers with the undercarriage, Hoekstra bid $101,140 for each bus, for a total of $404,56. Midwest Transit bid $102,29 for each bus, for a total of $409,16. And Holland Bus bid $99,367 for each bus, for a total of $397,468. So the bid totals for the 10 buses, Hoekstra bid $991,525. Midwest Transit came in at $994,541, and Holland came in at $983,569. Now included in the bid by Hoekstra are some safety items added to the, to the bus build we feel are essential to the fleet. They include that we had rear backup cameras and sensors added for all the new buses. All the special needs buses were equipped with an upgraded flooring and wheelchair locking system. Also added to those special needs buses was I, we added a mid-body heating system. And that's for the, for our special needs kids who is, who are our, our most precious cargo, so in the wintertime that, that they stay warm when we open up that door in the back there when we're loading and unloading for those folks. All buses will have upgraded LED electric stop arms versus having them run by, by air, which they are right now. So with the electric stop, especially in the real cold air, those, those things are going to work, which we have a problem in the, in the, in the wintertime right now. All buses will also be upgraded with stainless heater manifolds and radiator tubes for their cooling system, and also we got an upgraded hardware for our GPS system, and that came to a grand total of $7,956, which if you spread that over the 10 buses, which is roughly right around $800 a bus. So Hoekstra Transportation represents Thomas brand buses, which is consistent with the manufacturer buses that the district currently owns in the existing fleet of our 95 buses. It is essential that we continue to have a common manufacturer to minimize the amount of parts needed to be purchased and inventoried. Our mechanics know the ins and outs of this manufacturer, so there will be no learning curve with repairs when they're required. To have a common manufactured fleet is best practice in the industry. All these buses come with a three-year, 50,000-mile warranty, and Mrs. Heinrich spoke in her report earlier that the buses we would be replacing would be 2013 when they're, those buses are actually 2008 models that we're replacing. They're 13 years old. So I apologize if I gave you the wrong information when we met, but the 13 number was correct. It's just that those buses are already 13 years old, and we're replacing 10 2008 buses. So as she spoke earlier, when these buses are retired, we will take any existing parts that we can use, and then these buses would be placed on a public surplus bid site for sale. So it is the administration's recommendation that Hoekstra Transportation Incorporated be awarded the bus purchase contract in the amount of $991,525, with the funds to come from the Capital Projects Building at Site 2020 Fund. I will take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Rich.
Just something I want to bring up. I remember back when I was on the Finance and Facilities Committee, this was something that Mr. Hill brought up to me as well, because I had questions of, why are we going with a company that's not the lowest priced? And that's, you know, one of the important things is things that he brought up later in the report, which is, we have parts from other buses that we have since retired. We have mechanics who know these buses inside and out, and the impact and the financial impact of doing a shift would more than be, you know, detrimental enough to, to offset those, those costs, and making sure that we have these safety procedures in place, especially for our special education buses, is so important, and it's, it's a great thing to be continuing our, our work with Hoekstra.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. A lot of people don't know, Mr. Hill also used to be one of our bus drivers. So for Mr. Hill to do his due diligence, he did his, he did what he was supposed to do. He looked into what we needed for our children, because he has driven those children for many years, and he knows what those students need from special ed to our general population. I want to thank you for all of the work that you put into this. You get what you pay for. Before I can even raise my hand and ask, were you going to have the secure locks put in place for our special ed, you had already covered that. Thank you for everything, Mr. Hill, for being our bus transportation director, for looking out for our students for so many years, and taking care of them as they are and were your own. You have done a phenomenal job in doing this, looking into what needed to be needed, and you were pretty much purchasing, putting this bid out like you were purchasing a car for one of your own children to make sure that our children would be safe, and I want to thank you. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Well, thank you very much. I'm only one person here. I got a great staff, plus all the employees that work here, our drivers, our bus aides, our mechanics. So I'm only one part of the team, just like, you know, with Dr. Bobby Goodrum and, and Dr. Kelly Coffin and the rest of us, we can't, we can't do it all alone. We do it collaboratively, so I appreciate that.
Mrs. Heinrich.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I was echoing in my own ears. Thank you for, for your report, and just, you talked about the updated safety features, and just in our committee meeting, you really went through that in detail, and you talked about the backup cameras and, and the, the seats also, the, the newer buses. Just can you kind of just give a quick recap of the safety features, just because I think that's real important in, in our buses and, and our, for our parents to know, you know, when they're, when they're sending their children on the bus, what the features are going to be in, in terms of the seats and how the cameras, and you were talking about how they interacted with the bus drivers to give them a better view of things.
Yeah, the, the actual backup cameras that we're getting, that I'm having installed on the buses, it's, it's not going to be any, it's not going to interfere with the drivers whatsoever, because the, the actual video, the camera's going to come into there. They have a, a very large mirror, as you know, on the buses where they can look up at and see the kids behind them. So off to the left side in that mirror, when they, when they put that bus in reverse or they, or they open up the door, that mirror, that's going to come on so that we can be able to see what's behind them. Like if we have an approaching car, parents that miss a bus stop and all of a sudden they pull up behind the bus at, at the next, next stop, the driver's not looking for them, the driver's paying attention to the students that are getting on the bus at the bus stop, and they know how many students get on at the bus stop. So when, when that comes on, they'll be able to see that and, and be able to recognize that they're going to have somebody come running up alongside the bus. When you talk about the, the seats, the seats have been changed in, in these buses to, to be a taller seat. If you remember back in the older buses, when we rode buses, the seats were very, the, the back of the seats were very short. Now they're very tall, and they're also made to give with the G-forces. So if you're, you're involved in a, in a collision, that seat is going to move at least eight to 10 inches with the child so that the, they're not going to get a whiplash with their, with their neck or their, or get a head injury, because the, the seat is going to help them take the blow to that. The other stuff that's, that's on these, that's on the buses with, especially with Thomas buses, is the visibility that those buses have with, if, if you've seen our new C2 buses, the windshields and, and are huge, so that the, and we, we, they've eliminated a lot of the blind spots, because that's always been an issue for drivers when you drive a school bus, is, is the blind spots. Also that, when, you know, when you open the door, where there's also, we also had added the, the lighting on the steps that, that enter the bus so that when the kids are getting on early in the morning, that that's all, all lit and visible. Also, the structure on the bus, I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but, but buses are able to take almost like 10 times their weight. So if, if a bus was, was ever to roll over, you, you hardly ever see a bus when it rolls over where the actual rope caves in. The bus will roll over and it'll maintain its structure. So there's, there's a lot of new safety features that go into these buses now. And- And 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 they do say that, you know, it's it's safer to take a school bus than it is to have your parents drive you to school. And the buses are built so that they sit up high enough off the ground like if if a vehicle was to to hit the bus, they're actually going to go underneath the bus and which would be underneath the the students as well or the occupants. So you're not going to have injuries where the the vehicle will go underneath and and the students or occupants would not be would be injured in those buses.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions? We will move on to our next agenda item, number nine, which is public comment. Mrs. Buckley? Do we have public comment?
Hi, thank you. Okay, sounds good. My name is Sarah Felice, and I'm a parent of a first and fifth grader at FSA. We love FSA and chose it due to its innovation and ability to meet each child's individual needs. I was very disappointed to hear about the proposal to build a seclusion and restraint room. I feel this is an outdated practice that is not child-centered. When speaking to the Special Education Administration about my concerns, I did not feel that they were willing to consider another option. There is an abundance of research that shows that this practice is harmful to children. Five states have banned the use of these rooms and are instead focusing on training and meeting a child's needs before they are in crisis. There is national legislative pending that would ban the use of these rooms in the entire U.S. Over time, we've changed the way that we work with people with disabilities. Once it was thought that a person with autism could not be kept safe unless they were in an institution, we now know that's incredibly inaccurate. I've reviewed the statistics that are publicly available for FPS, and it shows the usage of seclusion and restraint that's far higher than other districts in Oakland County. I want all children, both with and without disabilities, to be safe in school, and I know that you want that also. A petition has been created to request that the district consider other options in this room, and already has over fifteen hundred signatures. Clearly, there are many parents who feel the same way that I do. Please consider using the approved thirty thousand dollars to put together a safe plan to meet the needs of a child in crisis rather than putting this money towards an outdated and unsafe practice. I want all educators and all students to be safe in school, and I believe that this can be done without a seclusion room. Tonight at the board meeting, when discussing what we were looking at for a new superintendent, it was mentioned that the candidate should understand how trauma impacts students. If that is a priority of our top leadership, shouldn't it also be a priority not to create additional trauma for students? It was also said the superintendent should understand the whole child, their academic, social, and emotional needs. Additionally, I heard Mr. Hill call our special needs students our most precious cargo. We are charged with keeping our children safe, not only physically but also emotionally. I'm asking that as a district, we mean the words that we say, not just when it's convenient or easy. Safely and fully meeting the needs of all children can be complicated, but it is possible. Thank you.
We are ending public comment at this time. I'm just waiting and pausing to make sure that we don't have any additional public comment. Seeing none? Okay. Public comment is now officially ended. Thank you for your public comment. We will now move. Let me just check the time and check my board members. We're all doing okay? Okay. We are now ready to move to action items. We have amended the agenda. We have a new item A for our action items, which is staff appreciation. Is there a motion, Mr. Rich?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education authorize the payment to each employee of the school district of up to 1.5% of the employee's annual wages as COVID-19 pay. This payment should be made subject to any necessary bargaining obligations with those employees.
Support. A motion has been made by Mr. Rich, supported by Mrs. Smith, to authorize the payment to each employee of the school district of up to one and a half percent of the employee's annual wages as COVID-19 pay. This payment should not be made subject to any necessary bargaining obligations with those employees. Is there any discussion? So I would just like to make a point here that the purpose of this authorization from the Board of Education is to recognize the tremendous service of all of our employees during this time. We recognize the sacrifices made over the course of this year, and we believe it is important to recognize our employees and demonstrate that we value them. I've heard this regularly from each of our board members. I have heard this regularly through our central office staff who keep us abreast of what's going on in the district. Thank you to all of you. Thank you for considering this motion. If there is no further discussion, we will have a roll call vote.
Dr. Blow?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Ms. Williams?
I'm a yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you for recognizing our staff. The next item is the appointment of Director of Facilities Management. You guys have in your packet a resume.
Yeah, good evening, good evening. Super, super excited to introduce our candidate for Director of Facilities, especially right now at this time. It is so important that we have continuity. So with that, I want to first acknowledge the work of Mrs. Felicia Venable, who of course left her left us to accept a promotion elsewhere. And I want to especially acknowledge right now Mr. Jim Pierce, who has filled in the gap to ensure that we are still meeting, especially with respect to our cleaning and disinfecting and sanitization, which are all pieces of our mitigation strategy. So he has been a critically important member of our team to help us as we strive to maintain continuity of our excellent services in our schools. Our recommended person has a great deal of experience in so many different facets of facilities management. And now I'd like for Mrs. Jennifer Kaminsky to please come and give us more information about our exceptional candidate.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Goodrum. As Dr. Goodrum stated, I am really pleased to recommend to the Board of Education this evening John Barth as our new Director of Facilities Management. John brings around 30 years of experience and a wealth of knowledge in K-12, higher ed, and corporate environments. His experience includes facilities management, bond projects, purchasing, bargaining, regulatory compliance, budgeting, health and safety, and third-party contract administration. He was also responsible for developing and implementing the new mitigation and safety protocols brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic in his current district. So I am really excited for John to come on board. Obviously, you know, we have a big bond project that's that's ramping up as well, and we've been doing some walkthroughs at the schools, and I'm excited to have him join us on on the bond side, but also with all of his knowledge and experience on the facilities management side. So John is here with us this evening, and I'll just see whether he would like to say anything.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Goodrum. It's nice to see you all this evening, and thank you for inviting me to the to the meeting. First of all, I'm really excited about joining the Farmington team. I told the superintendent when I interviewed that I started at the age of five in Farmington schools. And during that time in schools, I was his most formative years of my life, as you know. So I take with me or took through the through the educational system sort of my abilities that I now use in terms of supporting others, respecting others, being innovative, challenging myself, and then, like I say, supporting everybody on my team. So I really look forward to the to Farmington, coming to Farmington, doing what I can. Obviously, I did a lot of work in Berkeley and brought them to the next step they were needing to to reach. So I'm bringing some of that expertise over, a lot of that over to Farmington and what I've done in Berkeley. Pretty proud of my accomplishments, but there's a lot more to do, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
For reminding me and and others that you did go through Farmington Public Schools here. So it's always exciting to to have an alumni join our staff. So thank you.
Thank you both. Is there a motion?
Clearly, I can't make a make a motion, but I did just want to acknowledge the entire maintenance and custodial team. I know I I gave Felicia and Jim a shout out, but really, we would not have been able to make it this far and have the continuity that we did with every single member of our facilities and management and custodial team. So just wanted to make sure to appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of John Barth as Director of Facilities Management.
Support. There's been a motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith, to approve the appointment of John Barth as Director of Facilities Management. Is are there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to do a roll call for it? Do we need to do a roll call?
We do. Okay. Actually, I'm going to take that back and ask Mr. Walker to do a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Blow?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Very good. Welcome, Mr. Barth, to back to Farmington Public Schools. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate you. All right, we are ready for item C. Is there a motion? Mrs. Heinrich?
This is the approval of budget parameters and assumptions. I move that the Board of Education approve the budget parameters and assumptions for 2021, 2022, as presented at the March 9, 2021, regular meeting.
Support. There's been a motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Rich, to approve the budget parameters for 2122, as presented in the March 21 regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we get a roll call vote?
Dr. Blow?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. We're now moving on to item D, which is approval of bus purchase. Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 10 buses, as presented from Hoekstra Transportation, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Funds to come from the Capital Projects Building and Site Twenty Twenty Fund.
Support. There's been a motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith, to approve the purchase of 10 buses in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Funds to come from the Capital Projects Fund. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Heinrich?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Hill again for his thorough research and presentation to the committee and to the board and to our community tonight on on the bus program.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinrich. And I concur with your thank you from Mr. Hill. Seeing no further discussion? Mr. Walker?
Dr. Blow?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We're now moving to our reconfirmation of instructional delivery plan. Dr. Goodrum, would you walk us through this?
Thank you. And sorry, that's very difficult. And I believe that Dr. Coffin is on as well, but we spent a great deal of time at the last board meeting actually speaking about our our reconfirmation and some changes that we made that are actually still in alignment with our our current instructional delivery plan, which had us coming back in phases. So I don't know if Dr. Coffin has anything that she would like to add at this time before you all ask questions.
Thank you, Dr. Goodrum. So good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have the reconfirmation information that that is will be posted on our our website following your approval of this. Again, this is a requirement of the board each month, every 30 days, to reconfirm the plan for the upcoming month. So the information provided reflects the the instructional delivery model that we started yesterday. So that includes the five days of in-person instruction for our elementaries, our four days of full-day instruction for our secondary, with Friday being a remote day. And at the elementary, the afternoon is a is a remote learning day for our students with live instruction as well. And then our special education programs range from four to four and a half days of in-person instruction. An early childhood center is staying the same as they have since they've been back at the beginning of the year.
Are there any comments or questions before we entertain a motion?
I have a comment.
Mrs. Heinrich?
Mrs. Fox can go first.
Oh, my comment is that over the last couple of weeks now, we are trending back up with COVID. What plan or is there a plan or can we develop a plan to mitigate this so that this trending is stopped at this level now? I mean, this past week, we've had a number of students going into quarantine.
Yes. I'm sorry. I didn't know that was going to happen. Yes, Mrs. Fox. So we just actually, our our school nurse has been meeting with our building administrators to talk through those processes. We're expanding those doing the contact tracing. You know, as we know, schools are impacted by the community spread, and so we just continue to ask our community to stay safe and continue with their mitigation practices. We recognize and and we were, you know, pretty open with our families on the communication that this could be a possibility. So we continue to do our contact tracing. We continue to be diligent on our end with the schools, with the mitigation being in place, and we'll continue to work through these on a case-by-case basis and make decisions accordingly as we as we are able to continue with the staffing.
Can you just explain in terms of the process of learning that certain students have are tested positive? Does that happen when they get to the front door and the temperature is is taken of the student? How do you find out that these students are trending positive? Is it is it for the most part by the time they get into the classroom with several kids? I understand from some teachers that there's 29 to 30 students in a classroom. They're concerned about the making sure that everything is being sterilized. But my 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 point, though, is where's the point where you find out that these students are positive?
So it it's a variety of ways. So many times, parents recognize that their children are have symptoms and they have symptoms, and they keep them home, and then they contact the school to let us know. So many of the communications, you'll see things that say, no contact, the contact tracing didn't require anyone else to be quarantined because it was outside of the school. So we appreciate our families doing that. There are times, though, where students may be sent home from school because we have recognized one of the symptoms, and then the parents will let us know if they have, if either they'll stay quarantined, or they will have, be tested and let us know. So there's a, those are, those are the couple of ways that we do that. Most recently, I would say at our secondary level, it's through our athletics that we've had that. So those have been contained to teams. And so it's been, you know, through that, through that venue, that students have tested positive and been quarantined. Ways. There's a lot of different ways, and that's why the contact tracing requires a lot of, a lot of staff members' time in making sure that we are able to identify people. And quarantining, remember, is done out of an abundance of caution. So we are very, very clear with parents and our staff that we, we are still following the 14-day quarantine. We're still doing everything to keep our staff safe. And, and as you mentioned, we have the layered mitigation as those other ways to keep our staff safe. So it isn't about the students are there, but there's the masks and, and there's the air purifiers, and we have all of those other mitigation practices in place. And, Ms. Fox, I'm glad you brought up about the, the cleaning and disinfecting of our school. I think what, as of yesterday, all of our buildings had an additional custodian during the day now, working to help and support cleaning through the day, in addition to the nightly cleaning that happens each night to clean and sanitize our buildings.
And just if I can add, Ms. Fox, like our, our contact tracing, everything, those processes are still the same. So those are the same processes that we had in place last week. So yes, there are more students, and the social distance is less. So that means, as Dr. Coffin said, additional quarantine, but possible additional quarantines. But beyond that, these are the same practices that we've utilized since we have been in person in the hybrid as well.
Mrs. Heinrich?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Coffin, I, I just, I have, I have three things. First of all, at the elementary level, can you just elaborate or talk a little bit about how our in-person teachers are working with their students in person and then in the afternoon throughout the day? How our virtual teachers, how that has changed the instruction model, how the virtual teachers are working with the students throughout the day? And also, there were some concerns at the high school as far as the teachers that are streaming, I think you called it, and just maybe address what additional support that those teachers are getting and how they're adapting and improving what they're doing and, and what the, what the staff is doing at the level to, and how, what they've learned and how they're moving forward.
Yes, thank you. So in regards to our elementary, I'll start there. So we're four hours a day in person. Prior to this, we had students who were, some were teaching in person, both in the AM and the PM, some were teaching in-person AM, and then remote in PM, and then some, so they were planning for two different learning or instructional modes. And so what has happened now is our teachers are teaching either fully remote or fully in-person. That's allowed for our virtual day to expand with more live instruction. So not necessarily expecting a more screen time, but more time for small groups and, and more individualized and personalized instruction during that day. So as far as the streaming, we still have, we have some teachers now who've requested additional technology supports to be able to stream. So there, there are some teachers who've requested to stream at our elementary, and then are continuing to do that at our high school. I think the other piece, from the perspective of moving from the hybrid plan at the secondary level to the four days fully in person, so again, it's, it's on the, the, the planning that the teachers had to plan for. So planning for an A and B hybrid is a little bit different than being able to plan for all of your students to be in four days a week in person. And then the Friday is fully remote, where they have, they're still running through their classes, the six periods, as they had prior to when we made this change on Monday, and then have some additional time in the afternoon, asynchronous work for the students, and then time to collaborate across buildings and across disciplines at the secondary, as well as at the elementary. They have some time in the afternoon where they can also have common planning time.
Can you also address how you were able to accommodate parent requests and meet the needs of, of the parents that requested changes?
Yes, so thank you. So we were able to accommodate all the requests for our elementary, and I, I think that information was shared specifically with the board as, as part of the information from Academic Excellence. So as Dr. Goodrum mentioned, we have one building, Forest Elementary, that's at 77% of our students are in person. And then we have, I would say, 49%, or 50% is one of our, our lower ones at the elementary level. So we were able to accommodate each of the parents who wanted their child to come in person. That did require, in some cases, for our students who wanted to remain remote or go remote, there were some teacher changes there. Some buildings had very minimal changes because the, the teachers really came together and looked at more of a teaming approach so that they were able to make sure children had a teacher that they were familiar with. In some cases, students went back to teachers they might have had before the other switch. So we really, the teachers really worked hard to build those relationships and maintain those relationships with our students. At the secondary level, we were able to accommodate if, if people were in person and wanted to go to remote, but moving from remote to in-person. So as you remember, January 25, we asked families to make that determination for the second semester, but we did understand and were able to make some accommodations there. So we prioritize students with IP, students with 504s and other significant learning issues. If they wanted to come in person, we were able to prioritize those. We were able, if it didn't require a lot of scheduling changes, we were able to accommodate those, but we weren't able to get, unfortunately, accommodate all of those requests by parents because some of the students would lose electives, then that would mean they would have lost credit, and, and that, that wouldn't, you know, be, be in the best interest of, of the child. So we weren't able to accommodate all, but, but again, there weren't that many. So I just want to, you know, there was maybe a handful in some of our buildings, and they're still on waiting lists and if something would change. But, but able to do that at the elementary, at the secondary, just, there was a handful that, that may still be in remote who wanted to be in person.
Dr. Coffin, I read an article in the New York Times related to a study from Harvard University on air circulation, particularly in classrooms. And I was pretty pleased with the fact that, you know, we've gone ahead and installed air filtration units in each of our classrooms. My question, though, is now, with spring upon us and better weather, are we instructing our classrooms where we do have windows to keep those windows open? I'm sure that we're keeping updated on that kind of stuff, too.
Yes, absolutely. When possible, that's what we, we want them to be able to open their windows. So, yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Are there any further questions or comments before we entertain a motion? Nope. Is there a motion? This, as a reminder, is a required item that we are required every month to confirm or reconfirm our instructional plan related to learning. I- Oh, I saw a hand through the glass.
It's a reflection.
Sorry. Dr. Blau?
I, I move to approve the return-to-learn plan.
Is there support? Support. Okay. Motion to reconfirm our instructional delivery plan was made by Dr. Blau and supported by Mr. Rich. Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We will now entertain a motion related to our minutes from our previous meeting. Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the March 9, 2021, closed session minutes as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich to approve the March 9 closed session minutes, supported by Mr. Walker. All in, or is there any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. We will now move to items from the treasurer. Mrs. Heinrich.
I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure printout dated March 23, 2021, as followed. General fund, $8,772,479. General fund athletics, $159,928. Debt fund, zero. Capital projects, 2018 bond fund, $277,840. Capital projects, 2020 bond fund, $21,958. Nutrition services fund, $168,518. Benefit stabilization fund,
Support. Motion by Mrs. Heinrich to approve the expenditures dated March 23, supported by Mrs. Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Very good. Thank you. We will now move to the consent agenda. Mr. Rich?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the March 23, 2021 consent agenda as follows. A, approval of minutes for the March 9, 2021, special meeting, March 9, 2021, regular meeting, and the March 10, 2021, special meeting, the Head Start Directors' monthly report, and personnel items.
Support.
Motion to approve the consent agenda made by Mr. Rich, supported by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Very good. Next, on our agenda is item number 13, reports from board representatives. Are there any reports from board representatives? Seeing none?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Heinrich?
Is this the OSCBA DEI committee meeting? Okay. All right, the committee meeting met March 17, 2021. There was a 21-day equity challenge discussion. The board voted to postpone rollout to a later date. Not everyone thought that this was a good idea, that there will never be a good time and it should not wait. A couple of us are going to put together a short PowerPoint presentation for the board to give them more information on the 21-day challenge, how it works, and some of the options and responses from the members, so that they'll, we felt that they didn't quite understand the whole scope of it. The committee also felt that it should be rolled out with a speaker to make it more meaningful. Since the meeting, as a matter of fact, Sandra Dukey, who is the committee co-chair, sent out an email to the representatives just urging the Board of Directors not to delay to launch the 21-day challenge because there is never a perfect time. Then we had a guest speaker, Craig Thiel, who is the Research Director for the Citizens Research Council, which is a private, not-for-profit organization that promotes sound policy for state and local government through factual research. And he gave an overview of school funding and shared information about the COVID relief funds and how they are being allocated. And there was a discussion that followed through the equity lens. And for the board members, this information in this presentation is available on the OCSSBA link, and I, I found out how to access that, so I should send it out to you. And it's through the Google Drive, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinrich. Are there any other reports from board representatives? All right, we will move to item 14, Superintendent Announcements.
Good evening. I actually thought we removed this from the agenda, but I guess I'll announce that it's 7:57 PM because this is my first time ever being at this point at this time. So just thank you to the entire Board of Education for everything. But also, I guess I will take this opportunity to, to wish Christian Alexander, our Executive Assistant for Instruction, a happy birthday today.
Aw, happy birthday.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Item number 15, recommendations for future agenda items. Are there any recommendations for future agenda items?
Yes, to discuss the Community Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Blau.
We will be discussing it at the next Academic Excellence Committee, even though it is a board committee, to get feedback, input, and information from the administrative, administrators to help us with our formulation of this important committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Blau. I'm looking forward to that. Any other recommendations? All right, our next item is good and welfare. Mr. Walker?
Just taking, I guess, a, a point of privilege, I wanted to be able to publicly acknowledge and thank this board, superintendent, and all others who were gracious and kind enough to allow me to miss the last school board meeting, to be present with my family as we dealt with the loss of my father-in-law. And I wanted to thank a large portion of the community who offered, offered encouragement and support, thoughts and prayers for that as well. Obviously, we're not dealing with anything others aren't and haven't dealt with, especially during these times. But it is incredibly warm and wonderful to have felt this support and be able to be present during his transition and as we continue on this journey. So I just wanted to publicly, publicly say, thank you very, very much. It means and meant the world to my family.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. Blau, and then Mrs. Smith.
I have two things I'd like to address. The first is, if you haven't had a chance to watch the Spotlight, is that what it's called, Spotlight?
Yeah.
Okay. The most recent one, where Dr. Goodrum has a wonderful conversation with nine of our 15 FPS National Merit finalists. You need to. It's a wonderful discussion and will leave you feeling extremely hopeful for the future of our world. I'd like to congratulate Juliette Canoe, Brenda Rajakumar, Katerina Jevtik, Sonia Desai, Uma Sriram, Andrew Pan, Anish Kotapalli, Tejas Meir, and Sai Vamuri. I loved meeting you, meeting you, and hearing about your interests and your goals. I loved the question that you asked in particular about books and people, women in particular, who have inspired them, as well as what they want to do to change the world. It was very, very exciting, and we, we congratulate you and wish you well on your continued journey as you embark upon your life adventures. as you embark upon your life adventures. I would also like to pay my condolences to the family of Mr. Jim Ragland, beloved power He was a breath of fresh air, always had a smile, really made a difference in the lives of so many children in so many ways, and we will miss him.
Thank you, Dr. Blau. Mrs. Smith?
I'd like to thank Dr. Goodrum and her cabinet, and Kim Buckley, again, and Diane Baumann. We have been working all very hard to get our staff vaccinated. With the help of Zach Rich, our colleague, and also our state rep, Sam Stechloff, and myself, we have been beating down doors and knocking and making phone calls. We were able to find out ways how to do something, and Diane Baumann was the one that worked with the HR department and Dr. Goodrum to make sure that we got vaccinated, and I said "we." Mr. Rich and I took part in the vaccination a couple of weeks ago at Oakland schools, and I'm just gonna say, you know, we've had so many bad, negative comments about our staff and about our teachers, but I was able to sit and wait to get a vaccine. When I was turned down due to several allergies and issues, I just couldn't walk into a place to get a vaccine. So, Oakland schools provided us, but I was able to sit with, and I won't give out names because of HIPAA laws, I sat with a wonderful para-pro and a outstanding teacher from Gil Elementary, and they didn't say they were there because they wanted the vaccine because they were scared and they couldn't get it. They said that they wanted the vaccine because they wanted to come back to work. These two individuals, which are our unsung heroes, one is a math teacher at Gil Elementary, and the other one is a para-pro in SXI at Gil Elementary. And these two people told me how much they loved working in this district and how much they wanted to get that vaccine. And then, I guess, the drop-off spot afterwards, you know, some kids get a sucker or ice cream. Everybody seemed to have gone to Walmart on Ponyat Trail. So, I happened to walk in there, and I saw a couple of our bus drivers, and they said they weren't doing it because they were trying to find out to be safe. They were doing it because they wanted to drive our kids, and they couldn't leave Aaron Hill and Dr. Goodrum holding the bag with not having bus drivers. And it touched me so much. I almost bought him some donuts, but I didn't. But the bottom line is, I want to thank this staff for all that you've done. Thank you to the teachers that have gotten their vaccines. Thank you to Diane Baumann that are sending these messages nonstop, all day of our cases, and to Kim Buckley, who is working with this board, working with this community. You know, we've got, what, a lot of you don't know, is we're losing staff members and their family members, some of them from COVID, some from other conditions. And this woman takes out the time to send us all this information, plus deal with the seven of us, you know? And I just want to say thank you. Thank you, and thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our staff. And just keep doing what you're doing. Don't give up. It's a brighter day. This is our new norm, but thank you again, and thank you, Dr. Goodrum, for all that you've done. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Rich?
Thank you. I want to be brief on this. I just want to say thank you to all of the staff in our district who have been working so hard to make it so we can be where we are right now. And there are more challenges building up just as we are getting through other ones, and that just means that we are going to be taking them on as we have in the past. And I am very thankful for the effort of our, of our staff moving forward. I know that next week, we have spring break coming up. Everyone, I've said this before, I'll say it again. The being in-person here in schools is so dependent on community spread. I understand it is spring break. There are ways to enjoy this great weather, this break, without doing things that aren't safe. So, please be safe, please get some rest, and we look forward to seeing everyone after that. And just one last thing, I want to thank our entire community who provided their feedback, either for in-person focus groups or through the web form for our superintendent search firm. This is an extremely important task as we look towards finding our next, our new superintendent, and it's only possible by having all the data that's obtained through your participation. So, thank you for all the work that you did and for helping us in this next step.
Thank you. I echo my colleagues, particularly with respect to the thank yous to our staff for the constant pivoting and responses to changes and for doing what's in the best interest of students. I appreciate the increases in in-person learning and the, and the impacts that that has had to both the staff and the families. I also want to thank our families for bearing with us through these changes as we make decisions in the best interest of all of our students. And with that, we will now adjourn. Thank you.